Bob Booker, that they're gonna try to change this, but sales that are a million, over a million, are dependent in our sales ratio. Okay. What does, what's Deerfield do? What does, what do they do? How do they get their sales? I think we've got, I think we've got more than a million. So now I'm gonna check that out.
Well, I just wondered if anybody's, if there's been any kind of offers on it.
Oh, that I can, yeah, just look at the NMS and see if there's anything.
She won't be able to tell. Actually, only, only, only thing you could do is if there's no, if there's a contract.
Right, yeah, I pay for it in the contract.
Unless you have to know the, to the real estate.
Okay, we're recording whenever you're ready, Michelle.
Okay, ready?
Let's do it.
Be nice.
All right.
Interesting.
I call the Avon Township regular board meeting for April 12th to order at 8:39 PM. Be on to the event.
7:49.
7:49.
I think the clock didn't fall back.
Eight four now, it's seven, okay.
It's 7:49. 7:49.
Oh, it makes me feel so much better.
It does. You know, it is 7:49, but just, just.
It's going too forward.
It's been a long night, you're good.
It's been a very long night. Clerk, I can't even think of it, Larson, will you please do the pledge? I'm like, what?
Whatever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Dobrow.
Here.
Trustee Kirby.
Here.
Trustee Lefredo.
Still here.
Trustee Repa.
Here.
Supervisor Bowman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any public comments tonight? If not, we're gonna go to reports. Does anybody have a report to give tonight? I only have one brief one. The Lake County today has agreed to continue renting space for us and their, the price is gonna be six, sixteen hundred dollars a month. So that is great for us, it's a, it's a revenue that we're able to bring back into the township. They needed to get the contract signed today and there was no prob, problem because we're actually getting money rather than giving the money out, but I was able to make the decision, but I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it. Clerk Larson is aware of it, is now in our files, if anybody wants to see it, I do have a copy with me right now. That is all I have, you guys heard me speak for about 20 minutes or longer at the town hall meeting, so I think we're good to move on.
Okay, I covered most of my report during the town hall as well, but one item of note that's in the written report is about the levy extension. We had a total reduction this year of $329.66, which means we were like spot on with our levy number for the year, but we also had an unrestricted increase of an additional almost $15,000 as a result of legislation that was paid this year, which means our cap goes up by that for next year. So it's like a, the increase doesn't apply this year, but will, will apply for next year, so double win.
Anybody else? Can I have a motion to approve the report as presented?
I have a motion to approve the report as presented.
Any more, any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Kirby.
Yes.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Dobrow.
Yes.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we are gonna go from number 10 to number 1, that would be Guald Hamilton's presentation on Nipper Sink Road project.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight.
Sure, not a problem. Good evening, my name's Dan Brinkman, I am the Assistant Director of Transportation Services at Guald Hamilton Associates. I, I was asked to come to the meeting, I thought you guys were gonna ask me questions about the proposal or the project, so what information can I give you about Nipper Sink Road or the STP program? Or if you just wanna have a general overview as far as where we're, where we're going so far?
Yeah, some general overview.
Okay. My understanding, the township hasn't taken advantage or utilized federal funds for roadway improvements in the past, so at the end of March, every two years, Lake County Council mayors does open call for applications for surface transportation program or STP funding. So we worked with Bob Kula to, to make the application.
Bob and I actually have not met.
We worked with Bob to make the application to resurface Nipper Sink Road, essentially the township limits from just east of School Drive, basically the Nipper Sink Forest Preserve Trail Crossing, west to the ComEd right of way and the Millennium Trail. So that project will, was submitted to the county by June, we will know where that project scores and where it lands in their list of projects for funding. Basically, every two years, the county is gonna go for a call for projects and backfill two years, the two furthest out years of a five-year program. So the very earliest there would be funding for a project like this would probably be 2025 or 2026, depending upon how it scores with all the other projects that were submitted. In order to move the project forward, for federal funding, you have to go through, there's three different phases for roadway improvement projects as far as federal funding goes. Phase 1, phase 2, phase 3. Phase 1 is preliminary engineering, basically feasibility, if you wanna think of it. We go through the NEPA process, which is National Environmental Policy Act, 1970, before the federal government spends any money on any kind of improvement, whether it be a roadway improvement or anything else, they wanna make sure that the improvement's not gonna have any negative impacts on the environment, so that's we look at soil or special waste, construction debris, any dirt that comes out of the right of way has to be taken to an appropriate place, wanna make sure we're not negatively impacting endangered species, plants, there's areas out here where we have the Eastern Prairie Fringed Orchid we can't take, we also look at any potential impacts to wetlands, and we identify, but we don't secure any permit that would be needed in order to construct the project. And at the end of that phase, the state and in conjunction with the FHWA out of Springfield office, issues what they refer to as design approval. Once you have design approval, you're eligible for funding for the next phase. Phase 2 is the preparation of the construction documents or any documents necessary for land acquisition, so if we need a grading easement or if there's actual right of way needed for the project, that goes on in that phase. Phase 3 is construction, and then there's also requirement for construction engineering. So, the project that was submitted, again, is a resurfacing of Nipper Sink Road and construction of a side path that will connect the Nipper Sink Forest Preserve Trail to the Millennium Trail. Total construction estimate right now, and again, we have done engineering, so we're very approximate, is about $1.6 million worth of construction. As a resurfacing project, Lake County Council mayors caps resurfacing type projects at a million dollars of federal money. So that's what the application was made for. So there's engineering that's a local responsibility, and then any other gaps in the funding between the total construction cost and engineering and the million dollar cap that the county, that the council will give to resurfacing projects. So all in, with all the engineering components, as far as what we know right now and what we've estimated, you're looking at almost a $2 million total cost, of which FHWA or the federal government will provide a million dollars. Again, the beginning of that would be phase 1, we did prepare a proposal, provided it to Bob. At that point in time, the project was combined with Round Lake and it was going through resurfacing and struck this path all the way to Wilson. The application was actually scaled back to only consider the township's portion of Nipper Sink Road, so we'll be adjusting the proposal we provided to Bob earlier since we're not gonna design and engineer as much. That's the 30,000-foot view, if you have any particular questions, I know I kinda went through that fast.
Do you know when you will have that proposal to Bob?
I would say within a week, for sure.
Dan?
Get that updated. Yep.
Dan, could you briefly talk about ITEP?
ITEP, sure, so the proposal, the application that's been made, it was for STP Surface Transportation Program. There's another funding mechanism, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, or ITEP is the acronym for that. Again, it's another grant that the township can apply for that can help defer the cost of the path portion of the project. We have to pu, we have to push the envelope a little bit on that one because we're connecting a recreational trail to really another recreational trail, the idea, in the truest sense of the ITEP, is to provide an alternative transportation for people who would wanna bike or, or use that somewhere else. I think there's some merit to it because the Millennium Trail is, is a very large network and provides people access to a variety of things, not just recreational opportunities, but that's still an application. That application, I wanna say that call for projects will come up in about, there'll be one at the end of this year in the late fall, but in order to apply for that, you have to have phase 1 completed, you have to have that completed by a certain point in time. That phase 1 process generally takes between 12 and 14 months, and even if we started today, we wouldn't be done in time for the call that will come at the end of this year. So, in another two years, it, there, you'll be all done with phase 1, we'll know where we sit in Lake County Council's program for the resurfacing component, that, that million dollar cap, and you'll be able to make an application for ITEP funding to help defray, further defray the cost of the, the trail component of it, and again, that's an 80% match, so they pay for 80% of the construction and the construction engineering, if you're successful. That's a very, very competitive grant program, because it's, it's unique in that it's one of the few grant programs that will also play for, like Streetscape and aesthetic components of roadways versus just construction, so it's, there's a lot of applicants for that.
I have a question regarding, for those, there is an existing sidewalk that is from school to Fairfield, so that would be, the, the path would be, technically already is a path, correct? But, I mean, so then would that just be the extension of that to go to eventually Wilson?
Well, that's, that's a great question. Technically, when you talk about the feds and what they will pay for a path, a path is eight feet. It's a minimum of eight feet wide and it has to be at least five feet away from the edge of the pavement off the road. So depending upon the, the path of least resistance, no pun intended, in terms of construction, we may just leave that sidewalk instead of tearing it out and replacing it with something, it may make more sense. Tried in the corridor a couple times, and I just live just across the county into McHenry County, so pretty familiar with the area, there's a reason there's not a lot of sidewalk or path between those two connections, there's a lot of challenges, there's the creek crossing. So again, part of that phase 1, part of that feasibility component of that study is figure out where the best place, where the least impactful place to construct that path would be, but again, it would have to be an eight-foot wide path, whether it's concrete or asphalt, asphalt's a lot easier and cheaper to construct and maintain.
Eight foot wide, that's huge.
Eight feet. Eight feet, actually, they've changed this, if you wanna build on a state route or Lake County, 10 feet is the minimum. So eight foot for a multi-use path is the minimum. If you wanted to do it only as a sidewalk, you could do it as a, as a continuous sidewalk. Then there are other programs, like the ITEP program wouldn't be applicable because they don't consider a sidewalk something that you shouldn't be riding your bicycle on. So to be a true multi-use path, eight feet is the, is the minimum for a local road, a local jurisdiction.
Charleston. I would like to get your opinion on this, Rudy.
Yeah, so, so one thing I just wanna make clear about is, so this is going to Millennium Trail there, not going past all the way to Wilson, what was the Round Lake's response to all that?
My understanding is Round Lake, you know, they weren't gonna make their own application, they did provide a letter of support with the last revision to the way federal funds were distributed through Lake County, that Lake County Council mayors made it a requirement that a member of community be sponsor for any township government. So there's the sponsorship component, there's also a participant component where they would contribute financially, but to this point, my understanding is Round Lake has not agreed to contribute financially, they just, they provided the letter for sponsorship, and really, that's, that's the end of their involvement at this point. Doing a quick look, there are some pieces of Nipper Sink Road where it looks like technically it may be within the village limits around Lake, so again, once we get started, one of those first things is coordinate with everybody involved, would be crossing Lake County Highway at Fairfield, so we have to coordinate with them, there's permit process associated with that too, so, but for right now, it is only the township limits of the resurfacing and that pathway extension.
Okay, so, all right, I guess moving on to the ITEP, obviously, there is the Millennium Trail that goes to Baxter, or goes close enough to Baxter, that could potentially be an argument made there.
Yeah, I think, I think the connection that we originally discussed, if we'd made it all the way to where the path exists, east of Wilson Road in Round Lake, that connects to the school, that would give somebody the opportunity to walk to the Big Hollow School complex, it's, it's a much easier cell.
Right.
With, with all the changes and all the money that's coming into non-motorized travel, you know, we haven't gone through a call for that project, for that ITEP funding yet since, I can't remember the name of the, the last, the last federal act was passed, so I, I don't know how picky they're going to be, but I can tell you historically, it's an extremely competitive, they probably get somewhere between four and five times the value of the grant or the, the money that they have, the funds they have to give out in terms of applications.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's still, you know, it's still a viable program, and again, you start with your preliminary engineering, the further along you are in the process, the better, the better the project scores.
Okay, so generally, when, what month are we looking at in terms of, or year, in terms of getting a response back for the grant and knowing what path of least resistance is gonna be best for us?
You know, that would be, so again, for, you're talking about ITEP or are you talking about the STP program?
Let's go STP first.
Okay, so STP, right now, the call for projects concluded at the end of March, the application's in. By Ju, by the, I wanna say the June council meeting, the council, the council liaison, they will announce their list or their proposed, their recommended program. And again, there are projects that have been on a contingency list for two years, so they have the active program where they know how much they funded the project, they know what year it's ready to be constructed, those are considered projects in the program. Everything that wasn't selected for the active program was given an opportunity to stay on the contingency list. So there's points for staying on the contingency list for projects that made their call or their initial application two years ago, and if they've met other milestones, like if they have some of their environmental clearances, or they, you know, have identified, you know, the different pieces, or moved through, or identified all the permits that they need and they're waiting for design approval, you know, they move up the list. So again, my, my expectation is that the township's project will end up on the contingency list, depending upon where it scores. At a project last year, the Village of Bannacurn, they had a resurfacing project, you know, again, capped at a million dollars, their construction cost was a little over a million, million two or something like that. They had started before the call and we were closing in on being done with our phase 1 when that call came, they were like the fourth or, fourth or fifth project on the contingency list. As bids came in throughout the year and the additional funds came into the council, the council had enough money in their program to take those, look at that top list of contingency projects and they were able to move it into the active program because of the progress they'd made and again, because of the construction cost, so they were relatively small project in terms of the top five on that contingency list and they were able to move in and that's gonna get built next summer. So by June, you'll know where you are on the list, and then it's a decision by the township, you know, do we wanna keep moving, or do we wanna say, you know, this, this doesn't look good, we didn't score well, you know, those are different, certain decisions to have. When we work towards the end of phase 1, again, I use the term, we, we're seeking design approval, that means the federal highways have said, okay, this meets all of our requirements. Up until about three years ago, the, they were, you know, if you met all the technical requirements, they said, okay, we'll issue design approval. About three years ago, there was a new group of people that took over the FHWA office in Springfield and followed the letter of the old law where it said if you're not in a program, which means if you don't have funding identified, you don't meet the, you don't technically meet the air quality concerns. So we can't get design approval until we have some future phase funded, that's either the township agrees that we're gonna fund the next phase of engineering ourselves, or we get the decision and we're actually identified for a grant for the STP program. So, you know, there, there, the, the program itself, the STP program is really geared towards having a local agency fund phase 1 and phase 2 and maximize the construction dollars, that's really the way the program is set up, to be perfectly honest. So ITEP, the answer for ITEP, there'll be a call this fall, they do that every two years. There's no value at all in making application this fall because I think the deadline is gonna be like March or April to have complete design approval, and the reality is, again, 12 to 14 months is a pretty good, a pretty good range. We have a rural area out here, so we did a project on Fish Lake Road in Grant Township, a similar project reconstruction, they're gonna build a path. One of the criteria or one of the clearances that we have to meet is a cultural clearance, they wanna make sure there's no historic, potential historic impacts. The majority of the area in, in the Chicago land has been developed or partially developed somehow, we have subdivisions and they go, okay, there's a subdivision, there's not. Grant Township was rural enough that they actually had to send the, not agricultural team, I can't think, archaeology team out from Northern Illinois University and dig and, and look for things, and they, actually, they found, adjacent to the Henry Horner camp, they found, I don't know, like broken pots or whatever, so they told us we couldn't do any work there, so we had to scale back our project. I, oh yeah, I, I learned a lot, it was the first time that in almost a decade of doing this, that they ever had to actually come out and dig, and certainly the first time I ever had anybody find anything that we didn't know about, in terms of, you know, sometimes you know there's a historic building or something like that, that's easy enough to find. Yeah, so they found some evidence and said, no, can't build the road there, you'd have to avoid that property, so while I don't know what's out here, I fully anticipate just the, kind of the lack of development in the area, we will probably see the group from NIU out here at some point in time conducting some physical, physical search before they issue a cultural approval. So between that, there are certainly wetlands or potential wetlands along the corridor, we also have to do some coordination with ComEd, while it seems simple enough to say, look, I wanna build a path from here to the path that's over there, he knows, nothing is simple when you talk about ComEd. So there, there are a lot of pieces to the phase 1 study, and, and again, that's why I say to, there's, there's no value in making an application this fall with a, with a condition that you'd have all the design approval by usually March. So you would, you would wanna wait for the next one, and then you would have an excellent idea, you know, our cost would be, you know, much more certain, we'd know what we have to do in terms of trying to get the path across the creek, and what we're dealing with in terms of the concern about land acquisition, whether it's simply easements or actually, whether there's actual right of way that has to be acquired, so.
Do we have to, does it look like we have to acquire right of way right there, or is it?
I, I have not looked at it that close, there is a, there is a fairly decent right of way along most of it, again, there are some, you know, non-subdivided parcels that more research has to be done to see whether the tax maps are right, do they actually own to the center of the right of way, or, you know, there are, there are processes for dealing with that, you know, I don't wanna bore you all day long, you have to talk, we'll have to talk to the township's attorney and see what his position on.
You won't bore me, you might bore them.
You know, you, you talk to the, the township's attorney and see what the position is with respect to, we used to call it prescriptive right of way, the actual term of art is documented and occupied, so if there's enough documentation, you know the township has historically taken care of Nipper Sink Road. There's a little bit of legal gray area, as there always is, as to what your rights are within that, you know, half right of way.
Right.
There's, so again, a, a lot of the answers to questions like that, where do we need right of way, what's the final construction cost, what all permits do we need to do, what's the county gonna want in terms of improvements to get a path across Fairfield Road, all those things, you know, we shake all that out in phase 1.
All right, keep me informed on that part, because I'll be interested here, because I'm actually, I work in Franklin Park and one of the things we're working on right now is the Displanes River Trail and that whole process, so definitely interested in seeing how we can get this done and seeing if we can expand it to go all the way to Wilson, we'll have to work around Lake and Grant on that, but at the very least, getting our part done will be very important to the origins of this township.
So Bob, will you continue keeping Rudy updated on what's going on in my cell?
Bob, you're muted. Forgive me, yeah, I just wanted to wait to see where that new, new proposal, when that proposal comes in, was it, did you say next week, Dan?
I think within a week, we can get this updated to only be the, it's always easier to take cost out of proposals than it is to add, so.
Right.
Scaling it back is the easy part.
So that's, we'll need to look at that, of course, and to see if that's, if it's even feasible for us, and then, and then, then wait till, I think you said, was it May to see when the, where we're gonna be?
I wanna say either May or June, I'm trying to remember where, which, which, so Lake County Council, they have a technical committee and they have the full council, I just don't remember off the top of my head which one of those May or June meetings they make that announcement of their preliminary scoring.
Okay.
So in May, it's preliminary, they issue it for public comment, then they review it, then the technical committee recommends it to the board, so it doesn't become final until sometime in September.
Gotcha.
When that list becomes final.
That sounds good, I think, like I say, I think it's important for us to wait for those two key elements to see where we're, then we're gonna have a better idea, if it's feasible and where we're at, so.
Thank you for coming. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No problem, thanks for moving me up to the top of the agenda, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, and you do not have to stay, you're like, I'm out of here.
Is Lincoln or Stoll Lake, whatever you wanna call it, just.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes.
Bob, jurisdiction for the Avon Township goes all the way to Wilson Road?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
No, no, it goes, it goes to, it goes to the ComEd power lines there, where the Millennium Trail is right there at High Point.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, originally, they were talking about a cap of, I think it was somewhere around 2.8 for a project, but it's changed, that's why we're pulling apart from Round Lake, because, you know, we did it together with Round Lake, if they did theirs by themselves and we did ours by ourselves, there's a potential there for more grant money, you know, to get the project done, so that's why, that's why it's going back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, but we'll continue on under old business, should we do new business? Number one.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes as presented, can I get a motion to prove the March 21st, 2022 regular board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Dobrow.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number two, can I have a motion to approve the monthly bills as presented, prepaid bills and outstanding bills?
I'll motion to pay prepaid and outstanding.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Dobrow.
Yes.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number three, can I have a motion for approval of the 2022, 2023 Avon Township meeting schedule? Everybody should have a copy of that.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Dobrow.
Yes.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number four, can I have a motion to approve the finance committee budget report for the 2022, 2023 year?
I will motion to approve committee budget report.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Dobrow.
Yes.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number five, update and discussion of policies and procedures, that will be Clerk Larson.
Okay, you saw the report that I sent to offer, that, most of that was covered in there, that we've received an update from the attorneys, but we received that about a week ago in preparation for the town hall and the rest of these meetings this week, just not enough time to go through some of the changes they've proposed, so we'll be getting an update out to you guys in the next week or two, and hopefully we can bring that back up at the next meeting.
We will promise you, we'll put on the agenda. You've been trying, I know.
Thank you.
Number six, can I have a motion for approval of the SOLES IT service agreement? And I will have, do you wanna discuss it, anything before we go to motion?
This is, the previous group was acquired or bought by this one.
Right, so I also, there's a, there should be a letter in here as well, although it was a little bit late getting to everybody. So I did some cost comparisons on this. It's a little less expensive per month, but it doesn't include all the support hours that we had with our prior provider. So did a little bit more digging, historically, it's about a wash, is what we expect it to be. It's a 12-month agreement and expecting that 12-month agreement to be, we can break it at any time, 30-day notice. So really, in the interest of maintaining, you know, the security enhancements, making sure we have support for staff here, my recommendation is to go with this for right now. It doesn't preclude us from taking any other actions or looking for a different provider.
So I just wanted to make sure we had a little clarity before we make a motion.
I think, I think that's a really good suggestion. That gives us some time to actually see a new company for us and then be able to really analyze what-
And if we break it, we don't know.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
If we go with it.
Crystal, if we break it, we don't owe like a contract or anything?
No, it's just everything comes due before the, like immediately. It's not a big deal.
I'll second, just a motion.
Any more discussion? Then roll call.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Dobro.
Yes.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number seven, motion for the approval of the purchase of vehicle and accessory for the highway department.
So if I may, the vehicles you guys already approved, this is just for the, the snowplows for those two new vehicles. You have, you've got three bids in your packet. Herman Brothers has the low bid at 68, 75, 28 per plow, as for two plows, per plow, well, we need two. So I'm just asking for approval for those two plows.
Any more discussion?
This is because the new trucks aren't permitted for the correct, what am I asking? We're, we're looking to get the right size and match for the current trucks? Or is this to replace old outdated?
This is to replace old outdated plows, correct. Yeah. This is for the, these two are sized for the two new trucks. Go ahead, Mike, did you have another question?
Is this, I mean, do we have to act on this right now? It's about to be the summer.
Well, because if we, if we wait and we, there will be a price increase. I'm always trying, I'm always, and I don't, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm always trying to save money. So if it means I'm purchasing snowplows in the, in the spring, you know, previous to the next winter, it makes sense. You know, because there will be price increases, you know, as we, as the summer goes on.
When everybody's trying to buy plows.
No, I'm satisfied, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's why.
I'll make a motion to approve of the purchase of the plows that is, since we already approved the truck.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Dobro.
Yes.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number eight, approval of the proposal for consulting services, year 20MS4 compliance.
Again, this is a, this is something that we do every year with Gwalt. That's, this quote actually, the number two is probably, is actually fairly low compared with the previous year. So they, we work with them, they're very familiar with all our, our plumbing, as it were, and, and location of every, I just like, it just makes sense to stick with them instead of starting over. So I just wanted approval for that.
I, I vote to accept the, the proposal for consulting services with Gwalt Hamilton and Associates.
I second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Kirby.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was, I was turning pages.
Surprise, Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Dobro.
Sure.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number nine, approval of the 2022 road project bid.
Yeah, okay, so guys, TownLine you won't see on this one yet because that one's going out to bids soon. So this is just for Topless Hickory Cedar and the portion of forest that we spoke of before. Most of this, some of it's going to be paid, probably about 50% of it's going to be paid through MFT and the RBI funds. And then, you know, another portion, then the rest, the balance of it will be used for TownLine. But since it's not going to be fully paid for by MFT Projects, I just needed to have the approval from you guys to pay the rest out of our permanent high road budget.
I was just reading a little bit about the companies and the cheapest-
Yeah, so the companies, I'm sorry, so the, the low bid, the county goes out to bid for us and they use MFT funds. So it's all done through the county. The low bid was Schroder.
Yeah.
I like Schroder. They're veteran owned. I like Schroder. I was reading about them. They're veteran owned and they use union labor and they're cheapest.
Yeah, we, we have to use union labor, but, but they are, yeah, they're, they're a good shop. We've used them before, Michael, and they do, they've done some very nice shaving work for us and underground work. Some, actually, any four of these are fine, but Schroder was the low bid at 93.41.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Dobro.
This is to approve the bid for 90,341.11.
Correct.
Yes, I, I vote aye.
Trustee Lefredo.
Aye.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Trustee Repa.
Aye.
Supervisor Bowman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have no executive session tonight.
Oh, crap.
We could stay longer. Next, do we have any public comments? How about membership remarks? Well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, including members of the community who came for our town hall meeting and our regular meeting. I appreciate it. You do have something to say? Clerk Larson would like to say something now.
My apologies, I wasn't sure what the best time to do this was and I wanted to do this earlier. Travis Haley has been our moderator for a number of town hall meetings, year after year. Served on our finance committee, has served as the chair, most recently there, and has probably been at more meetings than all of us in the last 10 years, just to be truthfully fair. And GD's been at every one of them, I think.
GD's required to.
Except maybe one, because I filled in for you.
Yes, a special, a special board.
But, but Travis has been somebody who has been deeply involved in township business for a number of years. And this year, I wanted to take an opportunity to start a new tradition and recognize our moderator.
Oh, no.
And present him with a copy of the O F C P sign.
I just did a pat on the back. That's really nice. Ah, you know, that's how it goes. Those young ones.
Okay.
Just like I'm out of here.
Easter Bunny was Saturday, no ears.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I wasn't giving you ears.
Well, why not streetless?
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Rudy, it is.
Okay, all favor.
Hi.
Let's go. We're done.
Thank you, everybody.
Yay.
Adjourned at 8:27 PM.
It really isn't that bad.
At 8:27, isn't it?
Oh, it's 8:27.
Oh, it's 8:27?
We should just take that clock down.
It was off the board.